My allegiance is to the law, the United States of America, and to the Constitution, one nation, united in its resolve.
Lord, protect our land, our water, ways, and our atmosphere. Let us not harm or waste our natural resources. Give us strength and spirit to carry out your will. Amen.
Amen.
Clerk call a roll.
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alderman Lincoln.
Here.
Alderman Sahaski.
Here.
Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Woodward. All present, except for Alderman Woodward, Your Honor.
Thank you. Prior to getting into the agenda tonight, one change that we're going to make, we are not going to go to executive session after completing the open session of the meeting. And the first item that we're going to deal with tonight is a presentation by the Lake Reclamation Committee. Who is going to be the spokesman for that?
That's gonna be long.
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, how are you doing today?
Very good, sir.
Jim Best is my name. I chair the committee, the Lake Reclamation Committee, and I apologize for having this cold I've got. I was out observing the lake and got caught. But anyway, the Lake Committee, Reclamation Committee, has been around since 1988. I got involved in 1990 as a member of the Town of Granby Town Board, and we had a vacancy on the board on the Lake Committee, and pointing myself to the position, I guess. But more important than that is, since 1988, the charge of the committee has been to look at the lake in its total and provide some information as to the things that may be wrong with the lake and what may take place to correct any problem we found, make a recommendation to the Town of Granby and the City of Fulton, whose two entities have the boundaries encompassed the whole lake, and also provide the mechanisms to fund any appropriations we have to ask for to do anything. I have Mike Body and Joe Allerton here, and Mr. Sahaski sits on the committee with us. The biggest thing that we've come across, then the years go by, is the fact that we have all this information, and we were piecemealing monies together to do certain things. In trying to come to some resolution of what the problems were, we were finally able to develop a master plan here to do a study of all the information and consolidate it and go through a process of determining what the value of that information is. On the 28th of March in this chamber, we're going to have a public meeting at 7:00 in the evening to present the information with Ecologic as a consultant we have. The folders you have in front of you indicate some of the information that has been developed and where some of the problems arise from. I'll take and have to let this go to Mr. Allerton. He will take and give you some sort of information on that as to the technical part of it. Again, I appreciate the fact you allow us to present this information to you, and we'll see you again on the 28th. Joe, would you?
Good evening. As Jim said, we've been working on this problem of the lake since 1988, and about this time last year, we realized even though we had put a tremendous effort into improving the lake and spent some money on it, we weren't making the progress that we felt was necessary and essential. Matter of fact, the lake was even getting worse. So, and we knew that if we continued operating the same way that we had, we weren't going to solve the problem either doing it that way. So, we realized that we needed help, so we, with the help of a grant from Senator Wright and some help from the city, we got enough funds to hire Ecologic Consulting Company of Casanova, New York, who are associated with Sterns and Wheeler, to tell us what to do. So, we've asked them, first of all, to give us a state of the lake report, and that we now have. And this is one copy I'm going to give the mayor.
Thank you.
And the rest, for the rest of us, we have a brochure. The copy, they cost $40 apiece, so that's why we're so stingy. But these brochures cost a lot less, and we've tried to get some of the essential information in here. If you look at the first page, you'll see what our plan is. The first step one is the state of the lake report. We now have that. We are into step two, making community presentations such as we're doing tonight. Step three is the community workshop that Jim told you about. That's a week from tomorrow night, and that will be run by the consultant. They're coming here with all their facts and figures, and they're going to tell us what the state of the lake is. And we're trying to get as many people from the public to come in and ask all the questions that they want, and they'll be answered at that time. Then the consultant will take the information from that workshop, and he'll prepare recommendations on what to do. We have asked the consultant to tell us what to do with the lake, in all alternatives. Tell us what to do with the lake. Tell us how much it's going to cost, and tell us what we can expect. So, by next fall, by this coming fall, the second step, the second part of the project will be having, when we'll have another meeting in the fall, where the consultant will come back and tell us what he recommends, like tell us exactly what to do, and tell us how much it's going to cost. And that then would be step five, the recommendation report workshop. Then we have the job of getting the money that's necessary to do this, and this is going to be big. And then we have the job of getting the job, executing the work done. But it's a tremendous project, and there's a lot of problems, and we want all the people to know exactly what's wrong with the lake. Now, if you look, if you open your report and you see, with the first color one, this shows you the watershed, and it shows you the subwatersheds. And you'll notice the green, well, first of all, the blue is, of course, the Lake Niittawata, and Canary Creek goes off at that point off to the right. And you can see the watershed here. The subwatershed is Sheldon, then you have Lake Creek, and you have Pine Hill Creek. And these are all the creeks going into Lake Niittawata. Now, the problem with Lake Niittawata is several problems, but the two basic problems are this. First of all, there's too much nutrients going into the lake. The D E C tells us a lake should not have more than 20 units of phosphorus as a concentration in the lake. We have 200. The concentration of the phosphorus in our lake is 10 times what the D E C say it should be. And if you look at the center page, the page with the two maps showing the red, green, and blue colors, you'll see that some of our scientists have gone up the creeks, and they've taken samples at different points up the creeks, and they've measured the concentration. And you can see where the concentrations of Sheldon Creek way up there in the red part are very high, up as high as 127 to 214 units. Instead, keep in mind, again, the lake should be no more than 20. Now, notice the one on the right-hand side is events. What happens is that a lot of the problem is, comes, is the day-to-day problem. But the problem gets real big when you have events, when you have storms and rains, then all that extra flow of water really slushes all of the phosphorus down into the lake. So, the basic problem, one basic problem is there's too much nutrients going into the lake. The concentration of phosphorus in the lake is 10 times what it should be. The second big problem, I look at this page here, this last color page, and you'll find information there about the flow of the streams. You'll find information there about the level of the nutrient concentration. But the upper right-hand figure, 28, that shows the amount of suspended solids going to the lake. And it shows there that the amount of suspended solids is 8.7 million kilograms per year of suspended solids. That's 8,700 metric tons of suspended solids, or 9,000 tons of suspended solids are going into the lake every year. So, there's two basic problems. You've got too much phosphorus going into the lake, and you've got too much sediment, too much solids going to the lake. So, those are the things that are going to have to be addressed, and we hope we want people to come to our workshop meeting a week from tomorrow night, where the consultant will be explaining these results, and people can ask more detail about what's happening. And we want them to comment about what they want to do, what they want to do with the lake, what they want to use the lake for, so that he can make his recommendations accordingly. So, I think that gives you an overall picture.
Thank you very much. That is, what time is it going to be on the 28th?
7:00.
7:00 here.
Right here.
Okay. Thank you.
What did I forget?
Sir? Survey sheet passed on.
Oh, on 28th, whenever we have presentations, we're passing out a survey sheet to ask people what they'd like to do with the lake, swimming, or boating, or fishing, or whatever it is, so that we can, the consultant then can keep in mind what the public want when he makes his recommendations. Is that right, Mike? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank the entire Lake Niittawata Reclamation Committee, the three members that are here, Mr. Best, Mr. Allerton, Dr. Body, and the other members that have worked on this for a number of years. I applaud your dedication. I'm surprised, no, I'm not surprised, knowing you, that you haven't given up. This has not been an easy, it's not an easy problem. It's not going to be an easy fix. It's taken years to develop, and it's going to probably take years to fix this. But without individuals such as yourselves that were willing to dedicate yourself to this project, we wouldn't be as far into the project as we are right now, and I thank you very much on behalf of the City of Fulton. Item number one.
Notation, the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Joanne Cavalier, 367 South Fifth Street, Fulton, New York, as Secretary to the Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Jody Corsaetti effective February 23rd, 2001 into expired December 31st, 2001. Sir, I entered into the minutes of this council meeting of March 20th as a matter of record.
Next item.
Whereas, the Legislative Committee has recommended an amendment to the City Charter 177 entitled zoning to regulate upholstered furniture. And whereas, City Code subsection 17748 requires referral of any proposal amendment of said chapter 177 to the Planning Commission. Now therefore be it resolved that the attached proposed amendment to chapter 177 be referred to the Planning Commission for its report and recommendation thereon.
Do we hear a motion?
Second.
We have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item.
Whereas, a city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of March 20th, 2001 regarding a proposed local law which would authorize the expansion of the Fulton Empire Zone to include the portions of Town of Granby and the Town of Volney. Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
To get the information that we need on this public hearing, I would ask Mike Tredwell to come forward and give us some background on this. He is subbing for Jeff Hodge, who is not available at the present time.
Hi, Mike. Thanks.
Thanks, hi.
Thank you.
Don't forget it. Thank you.
This is doing very nice. Little big island, small. Okay, first of all, I want to thank you for considering the possible expansion of the Empire Zone in this immediate area. The Empire Zone program is a very aggressive program to offer economic development incentives to business that grow and create jobs in this area. It's a program that started back in the late 80s, and it continues to grow under the Pataki administration. They continue to expand the program, trying to make New York State a more competitive state for business and industry. Originally, the zones were created to be one square a mile, and then they were expanded to two square miles, 1,280 acres. The Empire Zone designation for Fulton as the host community was '93. Currently, the zone right now has a little over 900 acres in the zone. In your packet, there is a map showing the current zone as it exists right now. And also in your map, in the book, there is a map showing the proposed modifications and the boundaries of the zone. Now, the modifications, let me explain, have thoroughly been looked at from the standpoint of trying to identify areas that was felt by the Economic or the Empire Zone Board, as well as the Fulton Community Development Agency and operations of Oswego County in terms of evaluating areas in which we feel that the greatest potential for growth is and job creation in the community. There is approximately 361 acres being proposed to be added to the Empire Zone. And to summarize those acres, and there's a little narrative, also a one-page narrative in the packet that kind of outlines where these specific additions are. In the proposed boundary modification map, the green area represents the existing zone as it is today. The red area, which is in the southeastern corner of the map, represents some property in the Town of Volney that's going to be deleted from the zone. And one may ask, why is property being deleted from the zone? Well, this area, the red area, is, the left-hand red area, is the front yard of the former Miller facility, which is a combination of ponds and trees, and doesn't really offer any real potential for development. The red area just to the east of that is the railroad tracks, and we don't believe anybody's going to be building anything on those railroad tracks. So, by deleting that acreage, it allowed us to put acreage someplace else where construction could take place. Now, the areas being added, if I go in the right sequence here, that Jeff had on his little summary, okay. Area number one is the area along Route 3 west of the city, running into the Town of Granby, and the portions of the Town of Granby would be incorporated within the boundaries of the Empire Zone. That is a commercial strip and an area that could benefit from the Empire Zone designation in terms of additional development and additional job creation. Area number two, north of the city in the Town of Volney, is the site of Interface Solutions. Interface Solutions is a company that continues to invest a significant amount of capital in upgrading their facility. It's also a new, technically a new company because it was a spinoff from Armstrong. It is now an independent corporation that doesn't have the big monster company Armstrong with it anymore. It's standing on its own feet and operating in a very competitive environment, and the Empire Zone will definitely provide some significant benefits to Interface Solutions. The third parcel being proposed to be added to the zone is also in the Town of Volney. It's the Airport Industrial Park located just north of the county airport in the Town of Volney. The third or fourth area to be included is a combination of property on Hannibal Street, picking up some manufacturing facilities like Kenwell and some other commercial businesses along Hannibal Street. The other location is the Plaza, the K Mark, Wide Waters Plaza, just south, and all contained within the city now, and also some, a small commercial area along 48, south of the, on the southern portion, south portion of the city. In addition, would be picking up property, Miller, former Miller property that Coolidge-Fulton owns, the L shape property off of Owens Road, it's a property south of Owens Road. When we did retain North American Realty back in 94, when Miller closed down and evaluated the Miller site in terms of future development potential, that section along Owens Road was identified as a good prospective area for new development, new construction, potential new facilities. The triangle piece along 481 is also part of the former Miller site. That's about a 90-acre tract of land, which has a rail running parallel to it. It's, is a parcel that has the topography that could certainly be a good large development site. In fact, a few years ago, when Guardian Glass was looking in the northeast to locate a glass manufacturing plant, this was the site at that time that was shown to Guardian Glass for the Oswego County preferred location for that facility. Unfortunately, that facility for us, but good for New York, and went to Geneva where it located, but that was a parcel that Guardian gave some consideration to. The final piece of property being added is due to the closure of the Owens-Brockway facilities, picking up the Owens-Brockway plant, plus the, there's some warehousing that is not owned by Owens-Brockway, that's also located, about 150,000 square feet of warehousing space down there as well. But by being able to kind of lasso that in and bring that in, that's going to provide some future benefits to try to market that property for new development and job creation. Fundamentally, we're picking up, you know, a combination of commercial property as well as manufacturing property. The new benefits that were approved last year by the state for the Empire Zone are some benefits that are going to be around for, in some cases, 10 years, in some cases, 14 years. So, the speed in which we're trying to get this accomplished now in terms of getting the boundary modifications in place is where we can start. Because these benefits, the new benefits, went into effect this year, and year 2001 started back in January. And so, we're trying to allow any businesses that are being picked up to also derive benefits in their, for this tax year right now, when they file their corporate and business income tax returns in 2002, they will be able to pick up benefits if they meet certain criteria in terms of being eligible for those specific benefits. All of the impacted or involved taxing authorities are required to pass a resolution relative to these boundary modifications. I will be taking it to the county next month. The Town of Granby must pass a resolution, the Town of Volney must pass a resolution, and the City of Fulton, being in essence the host community for the zone program, must enact a local law as you did when you passed the original intent of participating in the old economic development zone program.
Now, to eliminate any confusion, this Empire Zone replaces the EDZ.
Correct.
There are no more EDZ zones.
There are no more EDZs. They're all EZ. See, we're trying to make things simple by dropping a D.
Does anyone in the council have any questions for Mr. Tredwell?
I do. The increase on Route 48, where is that? Looking at this map, it would tell me that it's Stroopler Store.
Is that tonight? That's tonight?
Yes. And then it's Wheeler's Plaza. City letters checked. And the one off of Harris Street, which you're going to describe as Pierce Drive, does that include Container Corp back there?
Excuse me, I didn't hear you.
Does Pierce Drive area, does that include Container Corp?
It's already in, Container Corp is already in the old zone.
Or Smurkis.
Old zone, that sounds like a Greenhouse effect. But the Container Corp is already located within the existing Empire Zone. This property is a property just south of that, which is the shopping mall, basically.
Okay. That's all I'll say for now.
Mayor, the River Hunt Square Mall, is that owned by Wide Waters? This gentleman mentioned Wide Waters. My turn.
The original developers of that mall was Wide Waters. The White Waters.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this issue or has a question of Mr. Tredwell? Thank you very much. I appreciate the information.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Will be. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Whereas members of the public, members of the council, and all in attendance were given an opportunity to present their written or oral comments regarding said proposed local law. Therefore, be it resolved that the proposed local law, which would authorize the expansion of the Fulton Empire Zone to include portions of the town of Granby and town of Volney, is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second.
Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item.
Resolved that the clerk's report for January 2001 in the amount of $18,146.42 is hereby received, approved, and placed on file.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the clerk's report for February 2001 in the amount of $3,391.13 is hereby received, approved, and placed on file.
Motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the clerk as records access officer be authorized to dispose of records that are no longer useful in accordance with the state education MU1 schedule.
Motion.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for sealed bids in his office in the municipal building on or before April's 2nd up to 2:00 p.m. and to be publicly open at 2:15 p.m. that same day in the council chambers located on the second floor of the building for the installation of a new traffic signal at the intersection of South 7th Street and Onida Street in the city of Fulton in accordance with specifications prepared by the Fulton Engineering Department.
Motion.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Why do we need a new light there?
We have...
I stopped at that corner three times today and it worked all three times.
We don't need a new light there. What we need to do is put our own poles in and then probably put a new light on that pole. Niagara Mohawk is not going to allow us to keep our traffic signals attached to their poles anymore due to liability issues.
Are there more than just this one place that that occurs in the city?
Yes.
Then why are we doing just this one and not all of them?
This is the first one that we're doing.
Ironically, it's at the corner of 7th and Onida. So is there any particular reason why we're doing this one first?
No, because that's the one that they had asked for originally first. We are going to have to do the rest of them. I expect more correspondence in the very near future.
Okay.
But we have, wherever we have our traffic signals on Niagara Mohawk poles, in the very near future, we're going to have to remove them.
Joe, you've got an inventory of roughly where the lights and poles are in town, don't you?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any idea how many intersections this is going to be?
No.
Closer to 10, closer to 30?
I would say closer to, closer to what, five to six, maybe?
Yeah, five or six at tops. Because we don't have to worry about the ones on 481 or Route 3. Those are state controls. We just have to take care of them.
Any idea how much is it going to cost? Between 10 and 100,000?
Yes.
Any idea which side of that, closer to 10 or closer to 100?
I've heard, well, without getting bids, I wouldn't know, but...
In the middle?
Over 50.
That's each, right?
Yes, that's per intersection.
Well, can I ask a question then of the council? There have been five traffic accidents at the corner of 1st Street and Phillips Street since that light fell down. That was one of the intersections that we were going to have to remove the light from anyways. And I was wondering if we could correspond this resolution and bond for traffic light and poles too, so we could reinstall the traffic light there at that intersection.
Well, I don't think right off the top of my head I want to whip out a bond resolution to pay for lights and poles. I do think that... I'd kind of like to think about this one for... Are we in a hurry to do this? Does it have to be done within two weeks?
No.
Can we table this to the next meeting?
They said they would work with the city in getting these done. They didn't give a timeframe, but they did say that they wanted to sit down with the mayor and I believe John and the police chief to get a better idea of how long this is going to take.
Can we table this to the next meeting, so I can think about it?
You are making a motion to table?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This item is tabled. Next item.
Whereas in 1982, the city built a pump station at the end of West 7th Street, thereby possibly limiting access to three separate properties. Whereas this administration has been aware of this issue for the past three years and has attempted to resolve it. Now, therefore be it resolved that the city attorney is hereby authorized to offer to purchase from Melanie Gordon and Barbara Gazziglia for the price of $5,000 the property known as tax MAC number 253.22-01-02. Be it further resolved that should said offer be accepted, the monies be paid out of the A1940.2000 purchase of land account. And be it further resolved that the city chamberlain transfer that amount from the contingent account into the purchase of land account. Be it further resolved that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate this transaction. And be it further resolved that this council specifically intends this resolution to be no admission of liability.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm just glad that, you know, this issue has finally put to rest. It's been gone through several administrations. How many aldermen that have sat here. And I'm just glad that we're finally resolved the issue.
We have a majority vote?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next item.
Whereas by deed of September 25th, 1984, the city conveyed a 24-by-94 rectangular piece of real property to James Alusi located on South 1st Street adjacent to the Canal Point Restaurant. Whereas the city retained an easement as part of said conveyance for the maintenance of public utilities. And whereas Mr. Alusi is now under a contract to sell said restaurant and the attorney for the buyer's bank is concerned about the easement and would like it removed. And whereas the city attorney with the help of the engineering helper has determined that there are no public utilities running under said rectangle and the easement is not necessary. Now, therefore be it resolved that the city hereby releases and extinguishes said easement and the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to effectuate this resolution.
Alderman Sherman, do you hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Ask a question?
Sure.
If there were no utilities there to begin with, why did we give them the easement 15 years ago?
Why did we retain easement? My understanding is that the engineer at the time was, and Ron Edick's word was very thorough. Felt that we have a sewer line to the right of that, to the south of that, a little further.
Isn't there like a pump station or something?
Yeah. And it's been checked that this, our line is nowhere near this. If we had to tear up our line tomorrow, we would not need to be in this property at all, so...
So it was just a little overcautious way back there?
Overcautious. My understanding is if we didn't do this, it would probably be a major hindrance to this transaction closing.
Really?
Because the way the easements were to now, as you can see by the survey, there are buildings there. The way the easements were to now, we could force those buildings moved if we wanted to get this property. If I'm the buyer, I wouldn't want that either.
Okay.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item.
Resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to readvertise for sealed bids to be received in his office on or before Monday, April 2nd up to 2:00 p.m. and to be publicly open that same day at 2:15 p.m. in the council chambers on the second floor for the construction of a pier at Bullhead Point in accordance with specifications prepared by Fulton Engineering Department.
Do we hear a motion?
I'll move it. Second.
If we're readvertising, what happened to the first advertising?
The problem developed with not having the letter from the Department of Parks and Recreation authorizing this. We now have the letter.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. I've noticed that we have some special attendants here tonight. What brings the scouts to our meeting?
This is Troop 755, from the Church of St. Christ's, living in San Antonio, our citizenship to the community mayor badge. One of the requirements that we're trying to top meeting. As Young led at a similar meeting like this back in 1976 back in West Seneca, New York. And I loved it. That sounded really cool to see how government works.
Well, I'm glad that you're here and I hope that it was educational for the boys tonight. Thank you. I have a couple of items that I would like to read and I'm very proud of both of these. This morning, Dick Nardozzi, the chairman of the Plumbing Commission, and myself made a presentation to Al Eichman. And I have a resolution that I would like to read into the minutes tonight. Whereas Elwin Eichman has been a City of Fulton licensed master plumber for 40-plus years and a licensed HVAC contractor for seven years. And whereas Mr. Eichman has earned the respect of his fellow plumbers, HVAC contractors, and faithful customers throughout his career. And whereas Mr. Eichman has served his community for many years as a member of the City of Fulton Plumbing and HVAC Board of Examiners and a member of the Town of Granby Planning Board. And whereas Mr. Eichman remains available to his community and faithful customers. Be it therefore resolved that the City of Fulton Plumbing and HVAC Board of Examiners do hereby bestow upon Mr. Elwin Eichman an honorary lifetime membership license on this date and signed by all the members of the Plumbing and HVAC Board. Mr. Eichman is with us this evening. And sir, I congratulate you and thank you for your years of service to the city of Fulton. And as of today, I was in receipt of a letter that I would like to read into the minutes. It's from the Office of the District Attorney. In regards to the people versus Matt J. Maxson. Dear Mayor Stafford, on May 24th, 2000, a City of Fulton resident, Diana Cooper, was found brutally murdered inside her residence at 251.5 West 2nd Street in the city of Fulton. Fulton Police Department was the lead investigating agency involved in this matter. They were assisted by the New York State Police Troop D Forensic Identification Unit investigators who assisted in the processing of the homicide scene. Through good, solid police work, Fulton Police Department was able to generate leads from potential witnesses that ultimately resulted in the arrest of the defendant. A fairly significant amount of physical evidence was gathered from the homicide scene, which ultimately was sent to the New York State Police Crime Lab for further analysis. Defendant Maxson entered a plea of guilty to murder in the second degree, waived right to appeal, and received an indeterminate state's prison sentence of 15 years to life on March 8th, 2001. I write you to compliment the good efforts of all members of the Fulton Police Department that participated in this matter. That starts with the first uniformed officer who was guarding the perimeter all the way through the investigators and the chief. Without a doubt, the sheer tenacity of the Fulton Police Department showed in follow-up on leads resulted in Maxson's arrest and conviction. But for the fact Fulton Police Department developed and followed up on leads that led to the defendant's employer and magazine sales subscription company, in all probability defendant and other valuable witnesses would soon have left our area. A successful prosecution in a murder case starts with the foundation core of the police work involved. In every respect, Fulton Police Department rose to the occasion. Through their efforts, the evidence gathered was so significant that the defendant offered to plead guilty as charged and received a prison sentence rather than go to trial. I send this letter in appreciation to all the officers involved. I thank you very much for your attention to this matter, for your true years. Donald H. Dodd, Assistant District Attorney. I am very proud to receive this. This just justifies my belief that we have a tremendous police department in our city and go above and beyond the call of duty, especially when a major felony is involved. And I couldn't be more proud of them. Does anyone on the council?
Officer tonight, your honor.
Mr. Hosky?
Yes, your honor, thank you. When I walked in here in the beginning of the meeting, I went over to the Boy Scouts over here and I says, "How many of you people are going to be going for the Eagle?" And I only saw a few hands that went up. So my plea to you, young gentlemen, I'd like to see every one of you try for that Eagle's badge, okay? Thank you.
Alderman Weston?
I just want to thank the scouts for being here tonight. It's a pleasure to have you here. I hope that you picked up some of the things that we deal with on a daily basis. I also want to offer my congratulations to Al Eichman. I've certainly known him for a number of years and he is a true gentleman. And if I need some plumbing work, I know who to call.
Alderman Sherman?
I have a couple... I have a couple things. Come on mailbox, I found the minutes to the Planning Commission meeting from March 12th. Bill and Kathy Saban, who live on Utica Street, have something that they want taken care of. I didn't know if we had gotten an official notice from the recommendation from the Planning Commission yet or not. I read this and see that we have not. They've been tabled at the Planning Commission till the next meeting. Is there any way that we can remember to put them on the agenda for as soon as possible after that? It'll be April 17th or whatever the second meeting is going to be?
It'll be the second meeting, yes.
Do you remember for the next meeting to put that on the agenda?
And that will be a right-of-way issue?
Yeah, we're going to have to advertise it because we're going to have to have a public hearing.
We can do what we did before, do it subject to...
Yeah, can we?
But if we advertise it, we don't get the recommendation of planning. We had to have it before.
We will get a recommendation either way.
That'll be for the 17th.
Whatever that date is, Joe.
Yeah, or the second meeting in the...
I want to have a resolution on the first... I wanna have a resolution on the first April meeting to advertise the public hearing for the second April meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Second thing is, um, can we ask the police department to make a couple of extra stops around Fairgrave School in the evening, because kids skateboarding and causing, you know, I don't think you're supposed to be skateboarding, uh, at the school after dark, if I remember the right rules. Do you know, Dave?
We will check, I don't know, I haven't heard anything from the school.
I thought the school had said originally that they couldn't be on school property.
I, I will be in contact tomorrow with, uh, with Mike Egan, and I will, I will ask him about that.
If they're not supposed to be there, could we make sure the cops stop by, because you could tell it's getting nice out again? If you know what I mean.
Okay, I'll definitely check that.
And that it?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilman, as you know, Pratt Street and State Street have been blocked off, rather, excuse me, between, uh, Pratt Street and State Street has, it has been blocked off by the construction of Seal Rights Edition. It seems that a pedestrian doesn't have, uh, a decent environment to walk through. If one wants to go downtown, to walk downtown, to go shopping, one has to walk around Seal Right, either the east, west direction or east direction, and, uh, through, it is a poor environment, both, uh, both endeavors. Now, is it correct that, uh, a new street is going to locate west of Seal Right, joining a segment of Lion Street?
There, there is a basic plan for that. We don't have finished plans for it, but there is a basic plan for an access road along, around the west side of the Seal Right building.
Also, walking down four-eighty-one, I noticed today that, uh, a length of sidewalk was covered with dirt and pebbles. It was just terrible for the pedestrian, I think. Unquote.
That, that would be up to the property owner to, to remove that.
Thank you very much.
Certainly. Is there anyone else in the audience that has any business to bring before the council? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.